About those things.
Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please, and welcome you to the school board on this Tuesday, March 3. If you wish to speak during the hearing of citizens, please pick up a card in the back of the chambers, print your name and topic clearly, and return the card to our board assistant, Kathy Tompkins. At the appropriate time, I will call you to speak. Please stand now for the flag salute by the Northport High School JROTC under the direction of Senior Chief William Renee. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
About face? Forward, arch.
Look at all of his medals.
Our student representative tonight is Ariana Gonzalez. I'd like to welcome you. It's nice for you to join us as a student rep. Please tell us a little bit more about yourself.
Thank you for welcoming me. Like she said, my name is Ariana Gonzalez. I am a Northport High School senior. I currently serve as the president of the student government at Northport High School. I am in the ACE program, National Honor Society, and I work at Publix. Thank you. After I graduate, I plan on going to the University of Miami and majoring in advertising, public relations, and marketing.
Very good. We'd like to thank you for serving as our student rep today. And I've already given you the certificate of appreciation. Thank you very much. It's good to meet you. There's no special presentations today. And now we'll have the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to ask Mr. Jody Dumas, your chief operating officer, to come up and if he could also bring Mr. Chuck Henry from the Health Department to give you a bit of an update.
Good evening. Thank you very much. We'd like to give you a quick little update on coronavirus and how we are responding to that threat in the school district. So last week, as a school district, we established a task force, an internal task force. And I want to thank all the members of that task force. We have been meeting. We figured we were going to meet weekly. All of a sudden, we started meeting daily because of recent developments. But really, our role in the response to coronavirus is really a secondary role. What we're -- our approach is that, much like a hurricane, the Sarasota County EOC is taking the lead role with the Health Department, providing that lead on that team because it is a health issue. So our role is to coordinate with Health Department, with Sarasota County EOC on a daily basis. They are really providing guidance in everything we do. So our role is to really make sure we're facilitating communications with them, discussing with them how we might react in accordance with what is going on in the community. But again, our role is really secondary, and we're taking our advice from the Health Department, from the EOC, really a team of people kind of deciding how we interact with what's going on in the community. So we have an internal task force that is taking all that information in, making decisions. We are communicating as much as we possibly can. Typically, it's been two communications a day. One early morning to administrators, if anything's changed overnight, what they need to be aware of in their schools, in their classrooms. And then later on, if necessary, a larger communication that many of you have gotten at the end of the day to all parents and families and staff of the district, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So that's been kind of our strategy moving forward. We also had an online meeting today with all staff, principals, excuse me, all administrators in the district, where we kind of went through all of some of the questions that have been emailed into us, protocols, how we're kind of reacting to situations. And so we feel pretty good that we're all on the same page at this point of how we're responding to coronavirus in the district. In our effort to try and make sure we're communicating as best as we possibly can with everybody, our communications team headed up by Kelsey. Thank you, Kelsey, for the wonderful job you're doing, is coordinating all of our responses that go out in emails or communications to principals. Whatever we're doing, we're passing through not only the Health Department, but also Sarasota County EOC to make sure they're all looking at those communications and we're accurate in the information we're putting out. Again, our role in the district is to interpret what's going on in the community with health concerns and how we might have to change policy, procedure, what are daily operations to react to that. We are not in a role of providing information on health issues. So that's where we really look to our partners to help us with that information as we move forward. So we are standing up a page on our website sometime tomorrow where we will be able to provide a fact sheet. And thank you to Dr. Kingsley for putting that together to us, a frequently asked questions sheet. We've got that ready to go. That'll be on our website. We've also established a new email address, which will go out tomorrow to everybody. If they've got specific questions regarding coronavirus and how that's affecting them, they can email us on that particular email address. The team of us will look at those questions coming in, and we will, as a team, consult each other, provide responses out in a timely manner. And certainly, if we have questions we can't answer, pass them up to our partners at the Health Department or at the County EOC to make sure we're all on the same page. So I feel like at this point, we've got a comprehensive approach. And we are really trying to be, one, proactive. But our main goal is to provide the message that it's really in Sarasota County Schools, business as usual. We're behind the scenes proactively making sure we manage the process and that we are answering questions as they come up throughout the district. So with that, let me introduce Chuck Henry. Chuck has really been instrumental in making sure that we are communicating correctly and been a great partner with us. And we thought it would be great for him to provide information for you tonight on how we're partnering to move forward with coronavirus.
Great. Thank you, Jody. And it's a pleasure to be here. And I really want to start out by complimenting all of you and your administration for the partnership you've shown. We've always had a strong partnership, but it's times like this when that partnership becomes so important. The ability to reach out and have conversations, I would say daily, but lately it's been multiple times a day. But whatever is necessary, we want to do that. I think our biggest challenge, and we're seeing that regardless of where it is, is ensuring that there's credible, consistent information out there for all of those that we care about. And one of the things we're doing with the Department of Health for that is pushing people to the state website and the CDC website. And the reason behind that is things, this is an evolving new virus. Things can change daily, sometimes hourly, and information is constantly updated. The minute I print something off and hand it to someone, the next hour, that can be outdated. So we're really conscientious about that, and we want to make sure the most current information is there. Today, working with our county EM partners, we made a decision to establish a daily messaging out to key administrators, our policy group, which would include the school board, so that you'll get, very, very short, here's the situation, here's what's going on. So because we know you get questions every day. We want to make sure you have that. It will start out with, as of today, at this time, because we expect things to change. I think everyone is aware that on March 1, the state announced their first COVID-19 or coronavirus cases here in Sarasota, one in Manatee County and one in Tampa. Those were the first for Florida. It was a surprise for all of us. We've all been preparing for, some for months, some for weeks, since this started in China. But none of us expected it to be here in our backyard. We're working very hard and diligently behind the scenes on the public health side to do, identify cases and contain. And we'll keep the community updated as that goes on. But our most important message is one of trying to remain calm as a community. The most important thing that we can all do is to ensure that we're protecting ourselves and our families. And we do that by staying home if we're sick, keeping children home if they're sick. The symptoms for this is just like influenza. So fever, chill, and shortness of breath, which may be a little bit more acute than you would find with influenza, but very similar. So if there's illness, we want everybody to stay home and self-isolate. We also ask people to wash hands, something we should all do all the time. But we're not as good at that as we probably should be. But we should be washing hands thoroughly and vigorously as often as possible throughout the day. And when that's not possible, we want to use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer, at least 60% alcohol, because that will also kill the germs. But soap and water is the best solution. In addition to that, we want to try to avoid touching the mouth, nose, eyes. So keep your hands away from your face. It's hard. And once you start consciously trying to do that, you realize how often you do that without even thinking. Especially, I wear glasses, so my hand's always up there. But if you pick up viruses on your hands and surfaces, they can't crawl up your arm and get to you. But if you put your hands up there, they can enter our system through those mucous membranes or the eyes. So we want to be careful there. The principal way that this virus is spread, though, is through what we call small droplet transmission. So when people cough or sneeze, these viruses can float around in that area. So we say, stay away from people that are coughing and sneezing, and remind them they should be at home if they're sick. That's a little challenging right now at this time in Florida because we're in the height of oak season. So those of us, I'm one of them, that have significant allergies to oak, experience watering eyes and runny throats and coughing. So we just have to be careful and aware. Those with allergies know that and deal with that. They probably need to be more vigilant about keeping their hands away from their eyes because it's natural. But certainly, if you have fevers or shortness of breath, you should be staying home. So the final recommendation we have for everyone is if you haven't gotten a flu shot, consider getting one. It is a little later in the season, but there's still value in that. And the big, one of the big values is it helps protect you from influenza, which might make it easier, if you have an illness, to differentiate between influenza and COVID-19, which is one of the things we have to do when we have people with respiratory disease. So those are the big messages I want to push. I just want to continue. Thank you for continuing the effort to educate everybody in our community. And I think Jody described it as a secondary role. I see it as a very key role because you've touched more than 40,000 lives and even more, if you think about the families for those lives across our community. And so your communication and interaction with our community is critical. If there's ever anything that you have questions about related to health, let Jody know. He'll contact me. We want to make sure that you're very comfortable with what's going on, up to date with all your information, and that we're answering questions for the community. So I'll be happy to answer questions if you have them now. But again, the big message is stay calm, wash hands, stay home if you're sick.
Mrs. Goodwin.
Well, I don't have a question, but I just have a couple of statements. First of all, I want to thank you. I want to thank the wonderful people that work for the Health Department because you all have been great partners to us in our nursing program and in other things that we do for a number of years. And Susie, sitting back there with a big smile on her face, knows that I was always a big advocate for adding more nurses to our district. And we have an additional 10 nurses, which I think is really important. And I'm talking to school board members all over the state of Florida now who are scurrying around and saying, ah, we need more nurses. We wish we had more nurses. And so I think that situations like this make it more important than ever that we have those offerings in our schools because we do have kids that come to school sick. And we do have kids that need our help with this and other things. The hardest thing for me with thinking of this virus is remembering not to shake anyone's hand. I, I'm right now, you know, kind of withdrawing because it's just a natural thing for me to do. And I'm really trying. I haven't started carrying the wipes around yet. I guess I need to. Somebody said, if you get on a plane, you need to wipe the seat down completely. I'm like, oh, okay. But I know that things are in short supply right now in some of our grocery stores and shopping areas. So I would just encourage all of you to do what's necessary, to be vigilant, to keep your hands off your face, to wash your hands frequently, and to encourage those beautiful kids that we've got in the school district to do the same. And it's a great time to learn not to touch your face and wearing makeup. I learned that many years ago. It's something women, you know, do quite normally, I think. But I want to thank you again for all the help that you have been to us and in this situation and others. And thank you, Jody, for your task force and all the people that are working on this because I've been out to schools today. And yeah, that was the first question I have had was, you know, what are we doing? And I didn't get to listen to your webinar this morning, and I wish I had, but I heard some good things about it.
Mrs. Brown.
I had conversations with somebody last night that was quite upset, hearing, you know, what are we going to do? Are we going to shut down our schools? We've got a student who's got, who's been isolated. But I understand that that was a family member of a healthcare worker, and neither of them are showing symptoms.
So let me be clear. Just get me interrupted. But as of this time, and of course, things change daily. As of this time, we're not aware of any student that we, as the Health Department, have asked to isolate related to COVID-19 in the school district, public or private.
Yeah, I think that, as I said, it was the mother doing it on her own out of abundance of caution. So we don't have anyone touching anyone. Right. But could you speak briefly, Jody, on some of the steps that we have been taking? Not because of this, but well, I think I remember when the MRSA came and how we had to change the way we cleaned our exercise gym areas and the bathrooms. And then we are using some of that because of the colds and the flus. Could you just touch on how some of the things that we are doing normally is helping us?
Sure, absolutely. So in terms of custodial nightly cleaning, we've gone to what we're calling an enhanced cleaning at every site. So what that means is all touch points, including desktops. So we're making sure we're focusing on those every night. We know in some cases that that won't get done because of staff absenteeism in a regular timeframe. So we authorize overtime, excuse me, if we have to, to get those items done. So next day, staff can be confident that we've touched every desktop, all the doorknobs, all the handles. Those are the things that we want to make sure we're hitting on a night.
And how are you cleaning them?
So we are using, we've got two products in the district. We use our normal cleaners, Alpha HP. And we've got Oxy Var we also use. We are rotating the use of those throughout the course of the week. They both are disinfectants, which will kill viruses. And so we'll be using Alpha HP the majority of the time. We'll be rotating in the Oxy Var. We like that mix of chemicals only because they can kill different things at times. So we're focusing on that. The other thing we're doing during the day is we are providing bottles of the Alpha HP into every classroom. Hopefully, in the next few days, we will have those in every classroom. We're ramping that up so that as teachers and students get a chance to during the day, they can squirt their desks down and wipe them off. They can take a break and do some of that. So that we've got that going on custodial-wise. In addition to, on school buses, we are providing the Alpha HP to all bus drivers in attendance. So we are wiping down seats on buses as much as possible during the day. So I think we're being, as much as we can, proactive on the cleaning side. Also, for food services, we're coming through the lines. One of the things we're looking at and we're trying to implement is some hand sanitizer in the line so as they're hitting the keyboard and punching in their numbers to purchase their meals, they have some hand sanitizer to make sure they're cleaning their hands and disinfecting their hands on the lunch lines, too. So I think comprehensively, we're trying to make sure we're looking at all angles in the district and covering them operationally as much as we can throughout the day. Enhanced also on the day side, too. So where day custodians have options and a little bit of time, making sure we're hitting handles during the day, stair railings during the day. So just trying throughout our normal daily interaction in the school district, focusing on cleaning, disinfecting, and just making sure everybody's aware of those procedures. So I think we're in good shape.
And if we get calls or emails, we should be referring them to this new email address or to the county Health Department?
Yes, absolutely. So the new email address is going to have an automated response. And we'll get that email address out tomorrow. The automated response is going to basically say, if it's a health-related question, please contact the Health Department. It'll also have links to their website. And then it'll also say that if it's a school-related issue, an operational issue, that we will respond. And so we'll make sure we get back to anybody who emails us on that particular email address. They also can email me. We'll make sure that gets in the mix. But we'll be constantly looking at all those questions and make sure we're providing responses out.
And were the charter schools included in your discussions today so that they're following through these protocols, too?
Yep. There were some questions about getting our cleaning products to them. And so we've made that linkage already. So yeah, so we're making sure they're in the loop.
Good, thank you.
Mrs. Ziegler.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to join the Zoom meeting, and I found it, I applaud everyone, the entire team. I know this is, something like this is scary, but I think it also shows how the collaboration and the working together with the county emergency management, the Health Department. It reminds me of Irma and when, you know, we really thrive in this moment. So I'm very appreciative of all of the work your team is doing and in collaboration with your team as well. And I appreciate communications because that is a huge part of this process. So thank you because I know you've been working around the clock. And I look forward to that email address so we can share it out so, to keep the accurate information. And thank you for all that work that you guys are doing.
Mr. Robinson.
I have a few questions. So you mentioned that, we obviously know this is taxing the custodians. And you said that we're solving it through overtime. Do you need a budget allocation from the board so we can get some subs in? Because my fear is having these people do the cleaning through overtime. These people are working late at night. It's long hours, long days. You know, shortcuts can be made, especially when they're doing stuff on overtime. Do you need us to, the board, to do a budget amendment to allocate long-term subs for the custodian?
No. So I think our problem in several operational units at this time is not budget. It's actually economy. And so at the end of the day, getting people in the door to custodial, getting people in the door to be a bus driver, which hopefully, the recent pay raise that you approved will help us out there. But also in the food service area, too. You know, just getting people into those jobs because the economy is so good, there are so many options for people out there, that some of those jobs we struggle with in these types of economies. So we are constantly interviewing and have the positions to put people in. We just do not ever get filled. And that's part of our problem. And then one of the concerns moving forward that our task force is discussing at this point is, you know, depending on what does happen in our community, if we start to see absenteeism at higher rates from our working individuals, whether that's custodial, food service, whether that's teachers, how are we going to respond to that as a district if we don't have enough bus drivers on a bus one day? So our team is kind of thinking through those items. But at this point, no, it's just a matter of getting people in the door and having them want to be part of our teams at those.
Yeah, so I just, you know, this, hopefully, it's going to be a short-term event. And so I know you guys are thinking outside-the-box kind of people. And I just want you to, you know, think about that when you're cleaning. And I want to, I see Sarah here. I just want to applaud her for, I know every day in food services is a day worrying about temperature of food, disease. She also does a $20 million budget. And so now she's taxed on with this Corona issue. And so I just want to thank Sarah for that. I also wanted, this isn't really a question, but I just wanted to make sure. I had heard that it's important to get a flu shot, but also it's important to get vaccinations because people who aren't vaccinated, I heard, that are more likely to be susceptible to coronaviruses. So I don't know if you'd heard the same thing, but I'm not going to attribute the quote to you, sir. But that is just something that I had heard.
Well, we'll always take assistance in getting people to get vaccinations because they really make a difference for all of our children.
And thank you, sir, for the partnership. And the children of our community are one of the most prized assets, and people are really concerned. And so I appreciate the Florida, And so, I appreciate the Florida, I mean, the Department, the Department of Health teaming up with us to alleviate these fears. Thank you.
The only thing left to say is thank you. I greatly appreciate the partnership that we've had throughout the years. I remember going to your office and sitting down with you and talking about nurses when we had a shortage of nurses and we were trying to figure out how we could cover our schools. And you've always been willing to partner with us and thank you very much. And Jody, thank you and staff for all the extra work that you have been putting on because I know this has been added, not burdened, but added to your workload, which is already heavy. So, thank you all for your effort that you've done.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Next is a hearing of citizens. Yes, that's where we're next, right? You'll have three minutes to speak. Please come up to the mic up here. If you haven't filled out a card already, do so now. We have, you'll have three minutes to speak and when the red light shines, please stop talking so that we can get on with the rest of the meeting. John Shawnee Gage, John Shawnee Gage.
My name's John Sattar and I'm here in reference to Gage and Shane Sattar, Brookside and Wilkinson. I was here November 5th and I was laughing, I was crying, I was looking for help for my children to raise leaders. And I just wanted to come here tonight and let you guys know that it took a long path, but we're here now getting the testing and the schooling that we need to raise leaders. I just wanted to thank you guys for being a part of this. And I would like to thank you, ma'am, for your input as a young person to want to put our future together, helping us do this all together. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much for, we very seldom get someone coming before us to thank us. So, thank you for taking the time to do that.
That's why I figured it was just as important as me coming out here the first time. And to raise leaders, you have to buy leadership, by your actions. And that's why my two children are here now to be a part of this because one day, they're going to be leaders. Thank you, guys.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, so there was an addendum added to item number eight on the personnel report. There were three items added for field trips for Booker High School. They're on your agenda under new business, items 36, 37, and 38. And we will need to pull item number 12 to a future agenda. That is the data sharing agreement with the University of South Florida, Manatee, Sarasota. So, there's some more changes that need to occur on that.
All right. May I have a motion?
Move for approval of the consent agenda as amended. Second.
Any discussion? And the vote is five to zero. It passes. Under new business, number item 35, please.
Move for approval of the amendment to the charter contract between Sunco School of Innovative Studies and the School Board of Sarasota County, Florida. And this is in regard to their eliminating their middle school and only having a K-5, which is something that was discussed many times. Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Ziegler?
Thank you. So, I know this has been discussed, but so as this has gone forward, and I know this is oftentimes a question as to where those students go that are currently being served, has that, how does that process work?
So, there's an estimated 90, 90, I believe it is, Denise, middle school students that will be impacted at SSIS. I think the majority of them are at McIntosh Middle School is the majority of them. We've made some considerations for that in our enrollment at each of the schools. We received a listing of the schools that they were districted, those individual students are, would be districted to attend. Obviously, they may have made different choices, but, and there's still a handful where we're not sure where they would go because they were never in our system. So, but other than that, we're.
So, preparing for.
We prepared for them to be absorbed into our district, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
From a financial point of view, is that going to have a net positive effect? Because I always hear people talking about charter schools and, and it has a negative impact financially when kids turn, go to charter schools instead of district managed schools. So, can I expect that the, the fact that 90 additional children are coming to our schools and not going to charter schools to have a positive financial impact on the district?
Well, it depends on where they go and how many teaching units we would need to add, but we will receive the full amount of the FTE for those individual students and that will be retained in the general fund and be used in offset with expenses. But if there isn't necessarily a need to add a teacher, it would have a positive impact, yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Do you know if they let these parents know about the choice window that closed last week?
I would imagine they, yeah, Denise.
Yes, they did. Okay. And of course, they could go on to a charter school too, another one too. All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? And the vote passes five to zero.
Item 36, I move that the Booker High JROTC field trip to Fort Benning, Georgia on March 7th through 11th be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. And the vote passes five to zero. Item 37.
I move that the Booker High School VPA choir field trip to New York City on March 13th to 17th be approved as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. And the vote passes five to zero. Number 38.
I move that the Booker High School Student Ambassador's field trip to Tallahassee, Florida, Valdasta, Georgia, Macon, Georgia, and Atlanta, Georgia on March 11th to 15th be approved as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
These kids are going to have some busy spring breaks.
And the vote passes five to zero. Okay, and that. Mrs. Goodwin?
Well, just for fun, I came across today something on student procrastination. Florida students. Florida students ranked second in the nation for procrastinating on their homework at least some of the time, trailing just Louisiana, according to a survey by educational technology company, Brainlee. About 15% of Florida students between the ages of 14 and 18 admitted they procrastinate all the time. The top cause for the pause in work, students say they'd just rather be doing something else. This week is National Procrastination Week.
So, that means I can't yell at my husband. Mr. Robinson?
I thought National Procrastination, it was two weeks ago, but they're just getting around to it now, right?
Oh, I'm missing.
No, no, it's this week. I'm on the. Now, that was fun.
I do want to, I didn't pull it, but I just want to mention item number 34, the approval of the sales tax, surtax three budget amendment. I know that Deputy CFO Krista was working on this a lot and so I just wanted to do a shout-out to her and thank her for all the, all the work she did on the sales tax, surtax amendment. So, thank you, Krista.
All right. The next monthly work session is scheduled for Tuesday, March 24th at 8:30 a.m. A litigation meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 24th at 2:00 p.m. And the next regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, March 24th at 3:00 p.m. We are adjourned.